Two.
Morning or afternoon?
And here is Larry.
How you doing?
Doing well, how's it going?
Good. Good.
Okay, we'll give it a couple more minutes, see if Ralph. Or Versati will join, and if not, we're gonna start.
Okay. So we got Mike is here.
Yeah, my grandma's here, you see him, he didn't say anything yet.
Hello.
Hi, Mike.
There he is, hi Mike.
Hey Larry, how are you?
I'm doing good, how about you?
Good, where did you go last month? You went somewhere, didn't you?
Uh, we went on a family cruise, my brothers and sisters from San Francisco. To San Diego to Ensenada and back.
Wow.
And well, wow is right, it was colder than heck, windier than heck. And shoot, there were twelve of us, six people got covid and four people got sick with something or another.
God.
I was one of the two that did not get sick.
Geez. Sorry to hear that, man.
Yeah, yeah, it was kind of a but we had a good time and tell.
Yeah, boy, I'll tell you what, I don't think I want to get stuck on a ship anymore. Forever.
Yeah, it was, uh, it was kind of bad, or it turned out to be kind of bad.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm not seeing anybody else, you guys. You guys are good with that, I'm, I'm gonna start.
Yep, I'm good.
Okay. Metro District Meeting, May seventeen, it is three thirty-four. And if Elena would be nice and can do the roll call for us, I would appreciate it.
Yep, definitely. All right, Board Member Larry Fox?
Here.
Board Member Michael Versati? Not here?
No.
Board Member Michael Graham?
Here.
Board Member Ralph Jacobson? Not here?
Nope.
And Chairman Shimi Shomo?
Here. Thank you, and it's just gonna be a small change, uh, since we have Maria from the school, and she would, she would like to go first, I believe, and if you guys don't mind, we can just move that forward and let her speak, I believe she wants to extend the same program that we allowed last time, so if, I can see she's here, I'll let you speak.
Hi there, everybody, thank you for letting me crash your meeting, um, I appreciate, I, I'm coming here for two purposes. The first, I wish I could do this in person, this is parents and kids thanking Metro, and I will leave it with Roy for letting us use the parking lot this year, I want to let people know what a difference it made for families, you probably saw some of that great footage about two months ago where cars were sliding into each other on Manitou Avenue. We have continued to use ten spaces, um, and generally from about seven, I should say about seven fifty in the morning till about eight-ten. Um, and I don't, we talked just, and Roy, I don't know if you're on the, in this call, if you want to throw out anything that we talked about. But hey, wait a minute, how do you have a background in there that makes you look like you're somewhere fancy?
Oh, I can blur it, so you don't know where I'm at.
Okay, well, if I could blur it, I'd blur my face too, but help me out, Roy, one of the things that we talked about was just really wanting you all to hear um, how grateful we are and what a difference it made with families, um, really about safety, right, so as you know, Pawnee Avenue is where the school is, getting kids to and from school safely, where there's no, very limited parking. And the whole safety dynamic is really incredible, we have, after you guys offered Metro, uh, the parking we had about ten parents sign up, and now we have ten volunteer crosswalkers who crosswalk um, the kiddos over from the metro lot, um, across to, um, the Pawnee, and then the kids come up, and it's really ended up being this beautiful community event. Um, so I really wanted to acknowledge and you guys, just to hear feedback about how just wonderful it has been. Um, and then the second part would be hoping you guys would be willing to consider this again next year, knowing that our school year will end this next Friday, will be done, and then we won't start back until August eighteenth. We would still, we're just proposing that you all, if you're willing to allow us to use it in the same fashion that we have this year, and I don't know if that's, if there were any issues that came up for you all, I just, you guys have brought up liability, I think we covered our liability through this state, for, through the district, but I wanted just to hear your feedback on pros and cons, um, from you all.
Uh, I can say that I didn't hear any bad feedback, and that's all. I, I'm excited about that, so, and it's helping the kiddos, uh, it's perfect. I'm, I'm happy and I don't have a problem continuing, uh, with the same, with the same way. If everybody else thinks the same like me, then we can add it to the July agenda and we can approve it then, if everyone's okay with that.
Our other gentleman that I see, are you guys, do you, did you hear any feedback, or is there anything you want us to know as a school system that we need to tweak or change or address?
Uh, I, I didn't hear anything about it, one way or the other, uh, I think it's a really great idea, you know, I'm into the safety on the whole thing, getting the kids across the street, and my kids both went to, uh, uh, school Manitou, and so I know what it's like up there. Uh, so yeah, I'm in favor of continuing it.
Okay, um.
Mike, any feedback?
Oh, I, I, uh, I'm in favor of continuing it.
Awesome, can I throw out just one thing real quick before you guys get on, I just wanted to let you know that what we'd like to do is just do a kickoff at the beginning of the year, and this will just be an extra just day where we would put, um, maybe the Manitou sign that just says Manitou Springs Elementary Parking here in the morning, because if there's some families that still don't know that they can park there in the morning. Um, and then maybe the first day that we use the lot, we have balloons and just do a kickoff in the lot in the spaces designated, just so people have identified it as a parking area. But I wanted to ask permission first, that would be on the first day of school, which would be, um, August eighteenth, or we would do it on the twenty-first, if you guys can live with that, if there's a concern that you see with that. We get about fifty percent of our, um, fifty percent of our kids are out of district, that was not over here at Manitou Elementary, I'll just let you know, um, it was Roy, I'm sure, but fifty percent of our families are out of district, and so just letting them know at the beginning of the year that that's a parking spot, and beautifully we've seen that some people are parking, leaving, then dropping out their kids, then going out the back, and then that allows for another person to come in, and so we'd just like to be able to advertise that spot or those spots. Is that something you guys could put on the agenda as well? I'm happy to come back and talk and just tell you what we're thinking for that, for the kickoff.
I think we can do that, um. We can, how about we go to the July meeting and we can add whatever you want over there? Does that, does that sound okay? And that would, that would be enough time um, for August, and we, we know, then we know exactly your plans, does that work?
Yeah, if for some reason I can't make it, just know that I will have everything ready, I just don't know if my own child's going off to college. So I'm gonna, I don't know where I'll be, but I will try to make it, and I will have everything, I would love to give you a sign and a letter that the letter that the school made, I don't know how to do that, so that.
I, I could probably pick it up, or you can give it to the police officer there, and they could drop it off to me, and I can get it to Shemi. I think I see Shemi at least twice a week on downtown, so I can swing by and carry it to me and get it to him.
That would be great, um, again, I, just a heartfelt thanks on behalf of our, um, students and families for supporting our safety, I really appreciate it.
Yeah, and I, I just want to add to that, Shemi, I think, uh, the Metro District, uh, I really commend this group on looking at the safety for the children and, and really appreciate from the city that you all stepped up to help with this, so thank you very much from the city as well. I think that shows, goes a long way to show everyone, you know, how we can work together and, and keep the kiddo safe and, you know, other people safe, so thank you.
Uh, it's our pleasure, it's our pleasure. I got nephews and nieces going to school in Manitou, so, uh, pleasure, yeah.
Yay, all right, well, I will exit the meeting, um, feel free if somebody has questions, I'm always open to phone calls or emails if I can assist in any way, or if I can celebrate you to other people, so they know that you're making a difference in our community.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a great day.
You too.
Thanks for everything you do.
I know.
All right, uh, we can go back to the approval of the April twelve, uh, regular meeting minutes, if you guys are okay with that.
Right.
Uh, make a motion to approve the minutes from the April twelve meeting. Is there a second?
Yeah, I can't do anything on that, I wasn't there.
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that would be two, because there are only me and Mike on that one. Uh, is that enough, Elena, is that, or do you need a majority for that one? Do you need a third? Because if not, we cannot approve this.
Uh, we do need a third, um, but Larry, were you able to read through the minutes?
Yes, no, that, it looked fine to me, uh, you know, even though I wasn't there.
Okay, I mean, if you were able to read through the minutes and you're okay with what occurred during the meeting, you, you can go on ahead and vote on it.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna redo that then, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the April twelve minutes. Um, is there a second on that?
I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that would be three to zero. And, all right, we can go to reports, uh, if Kevin is here, Kevin or Roy, which ever want to take this one, mobility and parking report?
I am here and ready to go.
All right.
All right, overall revenue for the two lots was twenty-five thousand one sixty, that was an increase of fifteen percent year over year. Uh, transactions were up three percent. The only decreases we had was the permit sales. And citations were down a little bit.
Are we getting, uh, parking control through the lots, or are we not, and are they signing over there still, Kevin, or is that, uh, not happening anymore?
That hasn't been happening since the construction, I'm not sure if that stuff was put back. But I can make sure it's there tomorrow, and we can start going through and signing off on that again.
I appreciate that, especially since it's gonna be really busy, and I'd like to know that there is, uh, supervision over there.
You got it.
Thank you, thank you. Any questions for Kevin? All right, no question.
Yeah, I just, since Smithney was way up over last year, did we have a closed part of the time last year?
Part of it was closed, and it might not have been around this time, but when they were doing the sidewalk and driveway for the map.
Yeah, that's right, that's right, okay.
But we are seeing citywide, we're busier than we were last year, everywhere.
Okay. All right. Well, that was just a huge increase, forty percent, or almost fifty percent.
Yeah, and now that it's easier to navigate down there, I think more people are willing to park and walk, since that construction's complete now.
Uh-huh, okay.
Makes sense, makes sense. Anything else for Kevin? All right, thanks Kevin, appreciate it. I believe Nicole said she's not gonna be available for this meeting. So we can skip that if you guys are okay with that, uh, just, I just want to mention, we have almost ten thousand dollars in the Conservation Trust Fund, and, um, I will be spending some time soon to try and find good, good benches, um, and now that it's, the, the weather is a little bit warmer, we can pour concrete over there, and after the concrete is poured in different locations, we will be able to put those benches on the concrete paths and secure them, so they don't just walk away, if you know what I mean. Uh, so I'll be, I'll be working on that, uh, through the month of, uh, May and beginning of June. And hopefully we can have something nice there for summertime. So we're gonna skip the finance report, um, and go to new business, uh, we already went through the first one, parking pay station replacement quotes, I believe that would be Kevin again.
Yep, I did include the quote in the packet, um, this is to replace the aging infrastructure of the machines at Wichita and Smithney, the city took this initiative on last year. We've already replaced five, and we just received our new five for this year, we're gonna swap those out. So I've got your quote, comes to twenty-nine-seven for the three machines.
Uh, when you say twenty-nine-seven, is that twenty-thousand, twenty-nine thousand seven hundred?
Yep, that's all three new machines, um, the new keys that go with it, everything that needs, basically, secure them, turn them on, program them, and they're good to go in about an hour.
Okay, so they are about ten grand apiece?
Yep.
I guess I, I'm, I've got a question, and that is, have we, have they offered us anything newer? Like, can we just have a sign with a uh, UPC code on it and let people scan that and pay, instead of using a machine like that, or is there any way to do that?
We, we do have text-to-pay signs around the lot, we can add more and remove that infrastructure if the board desires, and everybody can use that method of payment.
Well, or maybe, maybe one machine at Wichita and, uh, and, you know, and then let them text, but I don't know, I mean, what do the ladies that work in the lot see? Because I see a lot more people just using their phone for all kinds of payments.
We can, we can ask them, we can walk over there and ask them as well this week, Mike.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I'm just curious. I get, I guess if we have to buy three machines, then maybe we have to buy three machines, but it seems to me like things have been changing really rapidly in the way that people use their phones.
Yeah, what, what, what do we get from those three new machines, Kevin, is there's like new technology, or is there new? Why are we, why are we spending ten, ten thousand on each machine in town? Is that just because we have some, uh, budget in the enterprise fund, or what, what's the reason?
It's, there are new computers in them, the controllers that run the machines. They are faster to process, and it's just like any vehicle you were to buy. So, you know, the first five, six years, those vehicles are great, maintenance is low. Then they come out with new things, the parts become more expensive, it just becomes more cost-effective to replace.
Okay, understood. Understood. And how many years is this machine good for, do you think, um, before we need to replace them again?
Uh, we're averaging about ten years out of them, um, so by the time we get done with everything in the city, doing five a year, that will put us needing to replace those again in about ten years.
Okay, and we're just buying them upfront, we have no, no, uh, fees, no nothing to any third party or anything like that? We just pay for it one time and we're done?
Yep, it comes right from our vendor that does the enforcement, that, uh, they build the machines for us, it all comes from T2. I place the order, they show up in six, eight weeks.
Okay, and did you say you already replaced five of them throughout town?
Yep, and those are, they're slimmer units than the big bulky ones that we have, that's the new updated model.
Okay, where are those located, Kevin?
Uh, we have one over on the Washington Bypass, one in front of the Spa, one on Canyon, and then two are gonna be installed this week on the nine hundred water.
Uh, did you say High Water?
No, uh, in front of the Spa Building.
Okay, got it.
Uh, Lower Washington, right near the intersection with El Paso. And in front of Good Karma.
Good Karma, that's what I didn't hear, okay, I'll take a look at it, um, okay, I appreciate it. Um, I'd like to hear from you guys and to hear your opinion, Larry, Mike?
What, what's the warranty on it?
So the warranty on there, it does cover the bigger electrical, the computer in it, the, um, backend software support, so if we're having a communication issue, their support team will jump in and make sure it's working properly. Um, and those calls without that warranty are about fifteen hundred dollars a call.
And this, for how long?
As long as we have the units, it's an annual, um, warranty that we renew, and that warranty's about thirty-seven thousand, and it covers all fifty-one machines that we have now.
Okay, so we're ju, we're just part of that.
Right.
So we, 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 we re-up this warranty every, every year, and it and what does that break down to for us on the warranty part?
I'd have to dig out the last quote and do some quick math, if you'd like to move on, I can come back to it, I can let you know exactly what it costs you guys.
Okay.
Well, I've got a couple of questions, because I, I'm just kind of looking at this, uh, T2. Now, we're talking about the page twenty-three onward, right, the T2 Systems?
Yes.
Confidential quote, okay, so, uh, what is on that second page of that quote, would it be like twenty-four out of twenty-seven uh, page in the packet, what is the Luke two coin bill, C-C-A-C?
That is the, um, machine itself.
Okay, that's the machine, and then, uh, I was looking at okay, so so under hardware, that very first box, pardon me just a second, let me sorry about this background noise for just a second there, so that first the first box, the bottom half of that page twenty-four is one of the machines? Because when I look at the next box, the top of page twenty-five, um, let's see. Well, the middle of the page, it looks like there's another machine. Does that ma, make sense? Do you see that ten thousand eight hundred ninety-five?
I'm looking at the quote itself, I'm not in the packet, um.
Okay, well, this, this should be the quote, this should be page three of the quote.
Okay, hey, okay, let me get that.
And you know, I tried to paint, print this thing out in black and white, but some of the tops of the columns are hard to read for me, but, uh, I'm just looking at where it says Luke Cosmo Coin, C-C-A-C is ten thousand eight hundred ninety-five. So, that's a whole separate machine?
That's the bait, okay, so, that would be the replacement for the Smithney lot, that's the base unit price. Manitou Springs gets a forty-five percent discount, that machine will cause, cost fifty-nine ninety-two twenty-five with the city's discount.
Okay.
So we want to look at the far right column, that's the total price that the city will pay.
Okay, great.
Okay, um, I just have one concern, um, and that's just me. I don't like doing changes like this right before summertime. Is, is there a time sensitivity here, Kevin, or can we, can we be like down, down the road and just do it in, uh, September or October? There is not, not as many transactions?
Right, so this was just to give you guys the information, what the city is doing and what it would cost.
Okay.
Your machines are functioning, it's just a preemptive, if something major goes wrong in it, those parts will be more expensive, we can definitely do it as the season's dying down. Um, the quote is good for thirty days, but I don't see much price change this year with it. So if this is something you wanted to do later, I would just have to get the quote redone for the proper dates. Let the board know in August, September. They would, like I said, six, eight weeks on delivery, that put us month and a half, two months from approval for install will be well into October, if you guys wanted to go that route.
Okay, um, I would like to go that way, uh, I'd like to see how they work, and if the city is happy with them. Since you guys installed about three of them already, uh, and you ordered five, so I would like to go that route, and maybe, you know, add this to the next agenda as well again. And kind of get some feedback and hear from you, and if you guys are happy with it, um, and we're okay with it, we can, we can order it, we can even maybe order it and have it requested to be installed, um, after the summer. Uh, so, what do you guys think?
I think that sounds like a good strategy.
Yeah, I think we should talk more about it, I mean, there's, I'm looking at twenty-four hundred bucks of, of, uh, coin and dollar bill holders. Um, which, not too long ago, the city didn't want to take cash anymore. But I'm glad, I'm glad we do take cash. You know, and if, I guess, uh, isn't that what these coin canister and the bill stackers are, Kevin?
Yes, those are the, uh, the bill acceptor itself, the coin acceptor, and then the canisters for each.
And did the city order those, Kevin? For their machines?
The only machine that we have that accepts cash is in the Canyon Lot, everything is coin or credit card.
But the city can, the city continue to take coins?
Right, we haven't stopped that.
Okay. And you don't have.
I'm sorry, Mike, go ahead.
You don't have a plan to stop taking coins?
Not at this point, no.
Okay.
And Larry, I was able to find that warranty quote, I misquoted the price, it was thirty-one thousand six twenty-five. It breaks down to twenty-one hundred dollars for the three machines from Metro here on the warranty.
Okay, seven hundred dollars apiece, all right, okay.
Okey-dokey, um, yeah, I'm, I'm good if we're gonna just, uh, push this to the next meeting, get a little bit more information, a little bit more feedback from, uh, Kevin, and then we can, you know, we can discuss some more.
All right.
All right, next subject is hiring for the summer schedule, um, I just want to let you guys know any left, uh, so one employee, uh, completely left and is on a different, uh, path. Um, so we're a little bit short in the mid-shift, uh, usually there is three shifts a day, uh, the first one is ten to two, second one is twelve, uh, to four, the third one is two to six, and the twelve to four is kind of lacking in the midweek, um. I think we do need to get someone else to replace whoever we lost, um, plus there is one more employee that decided that, uh, you know, she can't, she's a little bit too busy and she can't, uh, take the shift on Tuesday. Uh, so we're a little, a little short here for, uh, you know, for the busy season. Uh, just wanted to ask you guys if you guys are okay, uh, with hiring one or two more people, um, um, I, I'm just gonna say that this time, um, I'm pretty sure I'm gonna be talking to that person and make sure that that person can work any day of the week. Um, I, I want that person to be available, um, and less, less, um, you know. I, I want that person to be available and less, less, you know, not like the rest that are working mostly two days a week. So that's, that's just my thoughts on that. I, I do think we need one more, at least one more person, if we want to cover those shifts, at least for Memorial Weekend to Labor Day Weekend. And I can also, when we hire that person, if you guys choose to, I can explain to them that it's summertime only. And the minute we get to Labor Day Weekend, if those shifts are not available, she will, or he will, be let, let go. What do you guys think about that?
Yeah, no, that, we, we do need.
Sounds, sounds good to me.
Okay. If that's the case, I'm gonna go ahead and make, do I, do I need to make a motion on that, Elena?
You do, yes. And then we also need a motion and a second for the reports, just as a reminder.
You got it. Let's do that first. I'll make a motion to approve the reports. Actually, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the mobility and parking report only, since we didn't hear from Nicole. She did, she did attached it, but to be honest, I didn't read it yet. So I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna go with making a motion to approve the mobility and parking report. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that will be three, zero. And can we add something, Elena, for the next Metro meeting to approve the finance report from this month? Is that okay with you?
Yeah, all of that.
Thank you. And then I'd like to make a motion to approve hiring for summer schedule. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that will be three to zero. Any discussion? Any public comment? All right, thanks, everyone, this meeting is adjourned.
Okay, thank you, Shemmy.
Thank you.
Okay, bye-bye.
All right, bye.